Well, the clock says 7:00 PM, so it's Monday, March 14th, 2022. This is the Town of Brookfield Planning Board. I call the meeting to order. We'll go through our roll call. I'm Tim Straz. Terry Ward?
Here.
John Mayer?
Here.
Gus Stratton? Carrie McNamee? Did I say that wrong, didn't I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It'll take me.
We'll practice.
I need the help.
You won't hurt us.
I'll need the help, trust me. My major vocabulary is challenged at times. Mr. Sharet.
That's wrong. That's right.
Thank you.
Present.
We do not have alternates to appoint. I would like to welcome Carrie as our newly elected member. Thank you. And Terry, thank you for continuing for another three years. Appreciate all your help.
Thank you for having me.
We are, before we can really begin our meeting, we need to elect our officers for 2022, which is after a town election. We have to reform our leadership. So we need to start off with the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we nominate Tim Straz to remain as chair.
I'll second that.
I accept.
Any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? Go along with that. I'm aware of that. I'm guessing not, right? No, all right. I accept. What's that? Do we get the vote on it?
Yes.
Yes. All those in favor of having Mr. Straz as the chair for another year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are at, we need a vice chair.
I nominate John for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Terry as vice chair.
I'm going to turn it down.
Put the vote.
Yeah. Do we want to second both of their nominations?
I second both nominations. So the board should vote. We have two nominees for vice chair.
We've done this before, haven't we?
No, we have. That's why I haven't missed the meeting since.
Everyone on both, please, up and down.
Show of hands, who was the first nomination?
I was.
Yep. Hold on, I get a, so Terry nominated John. Sorry. John nominated Terry. This will make for a fun minutes.
Who are on the table just to see who we want for a vice chair? Both for each one at a time.
Yeah.
It's a new situation.
Or John could just happily accept it.
Yes, John.
I'll accept it.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Carrie, thank you for diplomacy here.
I'm a mother, what's it happen?
Thank you. We appreciate it. All those in favor of John as vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We will open up for public comments. There are a lot of public here tonight. There certainly are comments coming on another subject matter, but do we have any unrelated to the public hearing? Yes, Mr. Fraser?
Yes. The town passed one Article III at town meeting. I think it causes problematic issues for the, our zoning ordinance, because it just says now that all we need is 250 feet of frontage on a private road, unapproved private road, just a private road. That was the wording that was passed at town meeting. And there is no definition in our current zoning of private road, so it can be whatever most anybody wants to call a cow path, it's a private road. And there is really no guidance in the state RSAs other than to say, it mentions private road, very fleeting land, said towns need to pass their own ordinances. So I'm going to encourage the planning board to relook at what got passed, relook at your definitions, and think about putting some more work in there on that, because I think that it literally, in my case, on Upper Lyford Road, I have eight acres. I have a tractor path that goes across my property. Because my property is not wet, I think that I could easily do a subdivision and call that tractor path a, not that I'm going to do it, but I'm just using myself as an example. Because I've got eight acres, I could at least get, and my current home sits in one corner, so it's already got its 250 feet of frontage on Lyford Road. I think I could, I could run that private road up and get at least two more lots in the back if I so desired. And I don't want to do that, but that's just one example. So I think it's something that the planning, I suggest the planning board take a look at going forward. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other public comments?
Just along those lines, how fast can the planning board enact changes to that, like to the wording of that, to protect the town?
We would have to wait until the next elections, I know.
So what happens if someone applies this year?
It will come through the submission process, like we are tonight for this subdivision.
When I saw that Article III, it went by me too. I think it was a typo. We didn't have any discussion of removing approved private road from private road.
Right, we'll have to go back and look. I'm taking comments here, so, not that I'll argue.
I just want to know if that pertains to Article II, too, that was passed, one Article, for Cedar Park? Because I know there's an issue with a setback from the river. I don't know whether it's 75 feet. I think that the public comment, they said 75 feet is the ordinance for the town. But I think the state requires 50 feet. But I think we passed at the town meeting that it was 15 feet. And I just kind of want to make sure that's clarified or that it's, or what we can do to prevent that from, if that's the case.
Thank you for your comment. Diane?
Diane Smith. I had communicated with you, Tim, that I wanted to have some comments. I was going to reserve them until another time. But since Frank brought up this issue, I just wanted to add my concern, I voted for the, for the Article, excuse me, I did not, actually, because the word approved, when I was on the planning board, had not come off of that particular section of the zoning ordinance. It disappeared last year. And in the wording in last year's warrant, it said nothing about removing that terminology. And I think that if people had known that it was going to be removed, the word approved disappeared. It's still in the definitions. So I would suggest that some additional thought be given to that. And it is possible, by the way, to change zoning ordinances before next March. You simply have to call a special town meeting.
Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to review and possible approval of our minutes from February 14th, 2022. Did everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes at all?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor accepting the minutes from February 14th, 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Thank you. All right, the next item is our public hearing on the Simone subdivision application at Wentworth and Lyford Roads, tax map 18, lot 20. It is 7:09. I'm calling to this hearing to order. Those who wish to speak, I do ask that you please sign in your name, to print your name, so that we can maintain it for the records, please. And address. For here. Procedurally, I ask that there's no cross talking, that everybody addresses the board directly. And please act simply as we discuss. We'll give Mr. Berlin an opportunity to present for us. Why do you sign in on that, Mr. Chairman?
I've got you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and public.
Excuse me, could you turn that just a little bit?
Sure.
If that's possible.
I'll do my best.
That's great.
Thank you. Everyone like that? My name is Brian Berlin. I'm a licensed land surveyor. I'm owner of a company called Land Tech. Excuse me, Land Tech has an office in Ospea and had an office here in Wakefield for many, many years prior to that. Zach and Christine Simone had hired me to look at subdivision potentials and other development potentials of their lot on Lyford Road and Governor's Road, or is it Wentworth Road? Excuse me.
Wentworth.
It's Wentworth Road, yes, I get too confused. And we did so and thought that perhaps the highest and best use for the property, if it was to be developed, is developed into a three-lot subdivision. And for purposes of orientation, this is Lyford Road up here and Wentworth Road down here. Just now.
109.
Or 109?
Yeah, 109.
State roads.
I think they're.
State roads. Both of them are state roads.
Just correct. But Lyford Road is a town road. We'll get your chance.
It's not, it's a state road.
Lyford is a state road.
Yes.
Let's, can we please just hold the, hold comments of it, Mr. Berlin? Give your presentation and you can, you can make comments when the time is appropriate. Thank you.
So it's tax map 18, lot 20, and it contains 79 acres. The land is in the RA1 zone, like most of Brookfield is, which has a minimum lot size of two acres and a minimum road frontage of 250 feet. Per the NRCS web soil site, which is the soil survey produced by the federal government and is just getting better and better by the year, the land is Paxton, which is a pretty similar side slope soil in New England. Wetlands do exist on the property. There's a very large wetland here that fronts almost all of Lyford Road. And these wetlands were mapped by a certified wetland scientist, Tom Varney of Varney Engineering. Having looked at the topography, the frontage in the wetlands, it was my opinion that the best that they could do is develop the property into three lots. The first lot is shown here in blue. It is a five-and-a-half acre lot, and it has ample frontage on Lyford Road. This lot will also access Lyford Road for its driveway. This section of Lyford Road is useless due to its wetlands. I don't believe the state or the town would be favorable about getting a wetland crossing there. So we opted to use the existing frontage up here on Wentworth Road. Last year, the Simones applied to the state of New Hampshire to get a two-to-three lot access point here, and that was granted. So in the end, lot 20-1, which is the pink lot, will contain 30, almost 37 acres, have its frontage on Wentworth Road, its frontage on Lyford Road, I mean, rephrase that. Its access on Wentworth Road, its frontage on Lyford Road. And lot 20-2 will contain almost 37 acres, also have access off of Wentworth Road and its legal frontage on Lyford Road. 20-1 will have 957 feet of frontage on Lyford Road. And lot 20-2 will have 670 feet on Lyford Road. So all three lots have legal road frontage, and all three lots have state-approved driveway access down there. But now that I just learned the blue lot would need state approval, we don't yet have that, but I don't think that will be a problem with DOT. So that is pretty much my presentation.
Very good, thank you.
Excuse me, can I add something? I already showed you, okay?
No, hold on, hold on, hold on. Yes, you'll get your opportunity. We're just about there. We're now with public comment.
Sorry, one more, I did request a waiver.
Yes.
Probably now is the time to just address that. In the subdivision regulations, as a waiver, the map will not be drawn at a scale larger than 1 inch equals 100 feet. This map is drawn at 1 inch equals 120 feet. And funny thing about scale, if you have to scale it up 20%, which is what we'd have to do to meet that regulation, it increases 20% vertically and horizontally. It would take two to three sheets to show this property on pages at that regulated scale. So for ease of simplicity, user-friendliness, just get it on a single sheet, is the reason we requested 1 inch equals 120. And I know the registry of deeds will not have a problem with it.
Understood. Just two comments before we go to the public comment. We met last month to accept the application. We brought up two questions. One was the receiving a new drawing with the proper, with a legible stamp on it, was one of the items, which I'm sure Bill submit, should we get to that point. And the second being the witnessing by town official of the soil test, and I did receive that from the building inspector. And I have that in the master application here.
Yes.
So.
So I did submit way back in December, a final MIR that does have legible seals?
Yes.
But I can get your hard copy if I need to.
Thank you. Public comment now. Who would like to start? Mr. Zachar?
I have three points. I hope the board considers this a major subdivision because of all the remaining frontage on Lyford Road. And when you check the zoning and the subdivision regs, you'll see that if you can further subdivide without creating new roads, it's considered a major. So I encourage the board to consider this a major subdivision. Second comment is, we try to maintain 250 feet of frontage on our roads. And I believe the proposed subdivision down on Wentworth Road results in segments much less than 250 feet. So I'd encourage the board to reject that part of the proposal. And my third comment is with respect to that five-acre lot. There's two proposed areas for development. The one on the front, I'm not sure, considering our requirements for dwelling size, it would fit in that first segment. It might have to go in the back segment, in which case you have to go across wetlands, in which case you need a wetlands permit.
I apologize, I have to take the notes here tonight. Next. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have.
Name and address, please, I'll write this in for you.
All right. 75 Lyford Road, Brookfield, Daniel Cross. My name's Susan Markey.
And you.
Okay. I have a couple of, you know, department letters right from the commissioner of the DOT, right, saying that both of those things, that he's requiring entrance, called state roads, okay, state 109, state 109-8. All right, this is the, would you like a copy of this? This is what you have to do to, right from Commissioner Swatzer, I'll give to Mr. Swatzer. So I didn't have time to copy everything. And then we have, you know, especially, this goes further on down the line. This has everything to do with how it's going to try to get rid of all this water, right, with dumping it on others. And that's synopsis, all right? But this is a blow-by-blow description of what has to happen. I also have maps and everything you would ever want to know about how to establish a legal pathway through wetlands and on state roads. I mean, that's the way it is. I called, you cannot change anything, sir. They don't care what we have to say. Too bad, that's it. So, you know, that's one, and woman is the other. I'll give it to you because it's too important.
Thank you. Next.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I don't know about the planning board's rules of procedure, but the ZDA's rules of procedure, which were copied from the planning board's rules of procedure, said that the butters usually are given courtesy of talking first in the subdivision application. So I want to make sure that the butters here tonight get to talk.
Absolutely, I apologize for not stating that.
Oh. Mr. King?
Wait.
Kirk, do you know?
We know that, but you're better. Yes.
Joey, Joey, no, we are, 336 Wentworth Road. I'm just wondering, is the intent to build houses there? Or intent to just sell the property? I mean, do you know what the intent is?
I can tell you, it's my property.
And it would be mine, for my husband.
And I would be on the other side. And the other lot would be built houses. Yeah, yeah.
More than, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer.
The two big lots, I plan on living on the one on the right with my husband, and my daughter and her husband on the one on the left. And the smaller lot would be just, we just want to have a lot there just in case.
So we share 1,800 feet of front of our property line with you.
Nice to meet you. We're looking forward to more of your food, very much.
Any other butters who would like to, yes?
Cheryl Perry. I want to be a butter. Has the lot been perked?
At the Cheryl, please, I'm writing this down.
What?
Address, please, I'm writing this down.
Oh, 274 Wentworth Road.
Thank you.
Has it been perk tested?
Blue lot had a perk test here, and the pink one here, and the orange one there. And those, all those perk tests did pass. Just, just, just. Any other butters that would like, yes, sir?
I have a question, I just moved in on my 314 where the entrance is. How many houses are we?
Name and address, please.
Joe's, well, 314 Wentworth Road. How many houses are we looking at? And how far back are they said? Are there going to be more houses being developed? Do we have any of those answers? Because obviously, none of us want 30 houses going in behind our houses. We moved up here to be away from that. Is that something that's happening?
One on each lot, that's it.
And where at?
Probably just kind of further in, because there's a lot of.
So out of view of everyone else?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Oh, where the square art is on the left, and then adjacent.
This helps, on the, on the pink lot, the house would be way back here. And the orange lot, probably back here somewhere.
That's near my deer stand, that don't work.
You can ease it.
Be careful with my grandchildren.
No, my deer stand is back there.
Any other comments from the butters? Before we open it up?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. My name is Charles Dahlberg.
Yes, Charles.
336 Wentworth Road. Thank you. The regulation that we passed on the building lots, then Rich mentioned the 250 feet of frontage, it seems to me that it implies that your driveway would be where you have that frontage. Most lots don't have two sides to them where they access roads. But I think the intent of that was that your driveway would occur within that amount of legal frontage for your lot. And I think the 60-foot strip, if they're going further subdivision down the way, the 10-acre lot, there would be no legal access for those two lots on the Wentworth Road side. It would be, even the wood lots are regulated to the point that on a class six road, they need 250 feet of frontage. I think it's important to keep the intent of the regulation in mind.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other butters who would like to comment?
Have all the, have all the wetlands on the lots been mapped? Or just the wetlands that were previously mapped?
Who are you?
David Goddard, 286 Wentworth Road.
What was that?
286 Wentworth Road.
Thank you, David.
The wetlands were mapped by wetland scientist Tom Varney.
On the entire lot, or just those, that particular area? Because I know back in my house, there's a river that runs through there. And I don't see that on any of the maps.
How long ago was that mapped?
That was 18 months ago or so.
Yeah, about two years ago, 18 months, yeah.
It's very wet up there.
There's a lot of wetland, we're not denying it. But that doesn't mean there's not a lot of dry land.
It just affects sometimes.
Any other butters?
Or is Carrie, 274 Wentworth Road. My question is about the 5/8 lot. I'm in a butter that literally sits. We've suggested putting that house so close to the, right, right there. Is that the only location that you can come up with on that lot for a buildable location? Where literally going to be joined, our decks are going to be joined, we'll be shaking hands at breakfast.
Well.
What, is there any, I haven't looked at the.
Can I show him that up close? Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. What kind of offsets is supposed to be?
The orange line is your offset.
That's the offset?
The orange line. There is the intended septic area, but they can try for another. And you are right there. Yes.
Right there.
No, no, here.
Okay, see, I was just hanging up.
No, it's Mr. Goddard, we have to cross a wetland to get it.
Any other butter questions before we move on to the rest of the group?
I got Peter Donley, Bryce Drive, 12 Bryce Drive. One of the questions I have, from what I understand, those are all going to be driveways going in, they're not going to be roadways? Or what is the intention down the road? Is that to be subdivided afterwards, too? Those are pretty big plots of land to have one person living on, or one family living on. Are they going to, are they intending to divide that later on?
No.
And then using that driveway as a road?
No.
Okay.
Chickens.
Because I think we. Because I think we have a thing with driveway, I mean, roadways, they have to be brought up to town specs. So if these are just going to be driveways to get into there, I don't have a problem. But if they're going to end up being roadways, then they have to be brought up to town specs. Which all your developments or subdivisible developments are that way in terms of. That was my question.
If I may, this plan proposes two driveways. A common drive surfacing the pink and the orange, as approved by the state. And a single driveway here. Which is not yet approved. Any other public comment? I've got several, so I was going to go last. Anybody else want to talk first? Because I've got, I got maps.
My only concern was that the mapping of the wetland, I've heard a lot of comments about other wetlands on the lot. How do we attest that this is completely mapped, all the wetlands? I mean, I heard about a stream running down there, I don't see it on your map. Where's a document? So...
There are wetland flags on the ground, and Mr. Barney provided us with a report in a sketch.
It has not the brook?
The brook is not mentioned in his...
In the D, is that considered wetland? So I would suggest the board ask for some sort of certification that this wetland mapping is indeed accurate. I don't know if Mr. Barney is, but I think, you know, it better be accurate.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Phil Darrell. I think it should be taken into consideration the time of the year that that mapping was done, too. Because if it's done in November, that's the drier month of the year. Whereas if it's done now, it's going to have a totally different picture.
It took him almost nine months to do it. Him and his daughter were out there a couple times a week, and it took him about nine months.
It's very generous about it.
Mr. Fraser, you're here to go.
Brian Fraser, 103 Lyford Road. And in full disclosure, I'm a former chairman of the Brookfield Planning Board. I'm a former chairman of the Brookfield ZDA. And I've been through this before multiple times, so you're doing a great job, Tim.
Thanks, Brian.
For the benefit of the board, and I know we have some new members on the board who are also new to Brookfield... I'm not picking on you, Perry, but I am picking on you. Because there's a variety of resources you guys have available. This is the 1990 master plan. And if you look at where the proposed lot's going, it shows great swathes of wetlands going through that parcel. So that parcel already has been, has been known for a long time to be wet. As is the end of Mr. Compton's property, which is north of it, which is the old end of Chigoroni's property, now Mr. Compton's property. That lower end of that is all wet, it feeds into this. But of more importance, the part of what the Planning Board needs to also take into consideration is the broader public safety. And it doesn't mean that this is not a developed lot. It just means you've got to be cautious and careful how you do it. So, the... As for those that people don't know, that this blue circle right here is the wellhead protection area for the Sammerville Municipal Water Precinct, I think is the official name. It's the town water system for the town of Wakefield. This parcel is not within the wellhead protection area, so the application's correct. It's not in, but it's really close. In fact, this parcel, especially right here where all this wetland is, this feeds under the road, and I have another hydronic map I can show. I've got several maps, I'm not going to bore you all with all the maps, but... Yes, I can show you that this has a direct hydronic, it's called hydronic? I think that's the right term, or hydraulic?
Hydraulic.
Hydraulic, right. I think they call it hydric, hydronic, so connection with the wellhead protection area. And we've already had an incident in town where farther up Lyford Road, in fact, it was Mr. Chigoroni's farm, Avalon Farm at the time, caused a point pollution problem that shut down the pub and the restaurants downtown. And I think you got affected by, did you get affected by that shutdown, David? That was before, before you had your restaurant. Because there'd been point source pollution up on that property, came down Lyford Road, went right in here, and right into the wellhead. The interesting thing about these wells is if you look at this map, there's the circle, the wells are, they're in Brookfield, by the way.
Right.
The municipal wells for Wakefield are in Brookfield, right across the town line, but they're there. And they're also shallow wells. They're only 15 to 25 feet deep. They're not, they're called surface water wells. Although they sit on top, this bigger blue area is one of the largest aquifers in the state of pure water. It's underneath Bill Gaber's house, if you want to know where the center of it is. But this, the wellhead protection area sits on top of even a more precious water resource, that aquifer, that's long been recognized by the state and has been very something to protect. And, and because these wells are surface wells, any point, any contamination on the service water, they're really vulnerable to it. And again, the town Wakefield got shut down. Everybody had to boil the water for a couple days because some horse manure got pushed into the stream, is what happened. And it caused, it was either E. coli, or I forget what it was.
Salmonella.
Huh?
E. coli and salmonella.
And salmonella, both. So, it cleared itself up, but all of us property owners, myself included, along Lyford Road are aware that this is a situation, not only is it just locally, but up to the, where the ridge is on Lyford Road, all the way down, we're the headwaters of the Branch River, which feeds into the Salmon Falls River, which feeds into the Biscataqua River, which is the Great Bay. We've had, several times, we've had representatives come to the Conservation Commission here and... And this is just kind of for your edification, too, so you know what your property does.
Yeah.
And it's good to know. That is that, we've had the Great Bay Protection come up and offer us grants to do better drainage, because we're the top. And if something bad goes on up here, it goes right down through the entire water system, right to the Great Bay, and out into the ocean, so... And we have had this one incident in town where there was point source pollution. And my concern with this lot in particular is that this is all, this is really wet, all the way through. You can actually see it on the map. Also, on this lot, has another problem, which I couldn't find the source information for tonight. There's a little yellow flower. If you go down Lyford Road in the springtime, you look out there in that swampy area, you're going to see this little yellow flower. I think it's either protected or on an endangered list. It's called a bog lily, or bog daisy, or bog something.
Bog daisy.
Yeah, bog daisy, something like that. And there's a lot of them growing in here. And so any human activity on this property, such as building a house, having a lawn, there's stuff that could negatively impact them. I agree with the comments made by several other people. And I think that the wetlands, specifically on this lot, need a little bit more looking at, and maybe looking at the habitat and some of the others up there. We have another group of these lilies, they're up off of Stoner Road. They're now on a protected, I think it's a 15-acre piece, do you remember? It's now owned by the Nature Conservancy, the homeowner, the landowners up there donated that property, but it's got same yellow flowers in it. And there are very few of them left in the state, so it's considered sensitive. So, just the whole property kind of has that. It's got some dry areas in it. And again, just because it's got issues doesn't mean you shouldn't let people build on it. That's not what I'm saying. But you just have to do it with a lot of knowledge and be careful about it. Mr. Pamp, who is a butter here, wanted to come tonight, but he had a medical procedure today and couldn't come. He also shares Mr. Perry's concern about the house being right up against the property line. When you've got this, all this acreage back here, and then you take one of the potential houses and you put it right up. And lastly, just again with my former Planning Board Chairman Hanlon, I don't think you can approve this tonight because of the technicality without a driveway permit. Because without a driveway permit on this small lot, you don't have a buildable lot. And even though Brian, who's had a lot more experience than me on this, thinks that the state would give a driveway, I think there are issues. The state is pretty strict with their line of sight requirements for driveways. And, and if you put the driveway where it, which is indicated, I think that's really close to the wetlands, so the, as Ms. Markey already gave you a sheet, the DOT is required to call a DES in. And the DES has already had, in the last year, again, little town history not applying to this parcel, there had been wetland and DOT and DES issues up Lyford Road with another lot that's being developed up there, that had a driveway put in that shouldn't have probably been put in. The story I won't go into tonight. But the DOT and the DES are already very sensitive to Lyford Road, because they've been called out here a lot in the last year or so. So, now, you might get a permit, that's fine. But I think you guys really can't approve this until you have that driveway permit, because this is a state road, Lyford Road is a state road, this section of it. And you need that to make this a buildable lot if you should decide to go forward. So that's just the full technicality for tonight. I've got more maps that can show, that do show the stream, and show some of the more hydronic... They're all in these folders, by the way, Planning Board. There's a wealth of information there. I'd be happy to go through them with you at some time, and show you what you've got in there. Didn't take me long to dig these out, but I knew they were there, so... Anyway, that's my present, too. It's just, you've got to be careful with this one. Because what can happen, again, this is for the town in general, what can happen is, you guys could approve this, house could get built, something bad could happen, and these people could have a problem. Mr. Chigoroni was fined, I think fairly heavily, for his little escapade with the, with the horse manure. And, you know, bad things can happen, and then lawyers get involved, and towns get sued, and... You know, once lawyers get involved, who knows who might get in the crosshairs. So, you need to be careful with this. One other small point, and I can't remember the RSA number, but to answer several people's questions here tonight, if they, if the applicants come to us with a three-lot subdivision, and then they come back within, I think it's four years? Did you look this up? Tim, do you know this one or not?
Yeah.
I think it's four years, and try and re-subdivide again, it automatically becomes a major subdivision. So they can, legally, this absolutely is a perfectly fine subdivision request here tonight, is a three-lot subdivision. If they come back within a relatively short period of time, and again, I think the term, four years, then all bets are off, it immediately becomes a major. And so if that were to happen, I know I heard some concerns here tonight, there are protections against, for the town in the RSAs to protect against that kind of thing happening. Because that was a trick they used to play in the southern part of the state. And there's a lot of case law on that, too, so... But, you know, you take everybody at their word, these are going to be two big house lots, which is a nice use of this property. It's just, you know, the access, oh, the, one other thing on the access point, those two containers are on your property, right? They were surrounded by water last spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I, even though you do have the DOT permit, I think that you've got, again, so if you use it as the access point, put it right way in, you have some wet issues that have to be...
Yeah, it's on the left-hand side more.
Okay.
And then there is, there was another spot where the guy that was dropping those trailers off got stuck in the...
Yeah, so, and I believe that Bill Gaver's have verified, too, that, because they're right here, is that, is that, that's wet.
Yeah.
So there's wet, there's, the wet issues on the whole parcel, and the part, the bigger parcel up behind it, too. All right, thank you, Fraser.
Thank you.
Diane, you had a comment?
Oh, yes, thank you. There was a question, actually. In the discussion earlier, before I got it, it was that wonderful presentation. There was a fair amount of discussion about the wetland mapping and so forth, and I haven't gotten an up-close look at that. But I'm wondering if all of the mapping of that wetland that has been done by Barney, you said?
Oh, sorry.
Has been transferred onto this display map? Or is it like an overlay? And if it needed to be enhanced or clarified in some way, perhaps as an overlay, that might be helpful. So, that was Diane's comment.
I will note that the drawing states wetlands were flagged by Thomas W. Barney, CWS 211 of Barney Engineering LLC, Powder Mill Road, all from New Hampshire, in accordance with state and federal pathologies. He has stamped it with his seal and signed it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, Diane, what's your street address?
503, sorry, Diane Smith, 503 Wentworth.
503, thank you.
I'm not a butter.
I can answer part B to her question. These wetland flags were surveyed by modern instruments. In other words, Mr. Barney did not draw an overlay. We went out there and located the flags with our theodolites. So, they're pretty accurate.
Yeah.
As long as you're answering questions, did the wetland person do the whole lot? Or just the wetland?
My knowledge, he did the whole lot.
You don't know for sure?
I did not ask him. I made that assumption as I would with...
So...
Anyone you asked to do their lot? I did not challenge him.
So we just don't know if the whole lot was done, or just the wetlands on Lyford Road.
I think he did the whole lot, because I showed him where he wanted to build.
Which was in the blue originally.
Well, no, it was further up, the other end of Lyford. And I know him personally, and I think he wanted to keep going until he could find with someplace to put a house.
But where's the brook?
Yeah.
The brook is...
The brook may not be a wetland.
And when you discuss water sitting around containers, that doesn't make it a wetland, if water temporarily sits there.
Nobody states, where is it? Should be on the map.
Well, I think it's there.
No, it's there.
That comes in place.
Because I know there was one that was...
Any other... Yes. Comments come to me, please. Anybody else have public comment?
I have one question.
One question, yes.
Susan Markey, 75 Lyford Road.
Thank you.
That whole parcel of land has everything to do with that brook that runs behind our house. Um, starting from, you know, from, I don't know, at least Frank's all the way down from Compton. He gets it, we get it, all right? That water runs constantly all winter long, it never stops, I don't know. It's a brook, it's...
Is that one side of the ground?
No, it does not, okay? It goes down there, it's constantly open. The mouth of it starts right there where it starts to spread out, all right? That's where it starts spreading out, right before Cam's house, right? It's the terrain. We live in Brookfield. That brook, it docks right there, okay? Ninety percent of that water goes right down, like Frank says, to the reservoir for Wakefield, Sammerville.
Got it, thank you, perfect.
That's important.
It is important, and we've noted it several times, and I appreciate you reiterating. Are there any other public comments that are, have not been discussed, are unique to this hearing tonight, that people would like to talk about before we move on? All right, we're moving on, thank you. Thank you very much for your public comments. Can I make a rebuttal, if you will? Yes. I'll keep it very brief. Yes, please. First, I think we're being very, very sensitive to the lot and its wetish conditions, or we'd ask for more lots. This was a dry access. It was, it's legal frontage, it may not be 250 feet, but each lot has their legal minimum. We are promoting or proposing no wetland crossings or impacts at all, just being sensitive to all that environment. We're not saying this is the best lot in Brookfield. It's a D-minus lot, if you want to grade it in grade school. Its only buildable areas are here and here. If you want to call it a major subdivision, we have no objection to that, but you will never see this lot again for a further subdivision based on wetlands, rules, and environmental factors. Great, thank you. So, it's five of us here to discuss and review public comments. Well, let's not be quiet, let's talk.
I agree, this lot, five, the proposed site with all the setbacks does not leave a lot of room for a dwelling in there, with a leaf field. And it does encroach on the button locks, the neighbors.
So, potential house here and here.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
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 Yes, sir.
May I call back Frank Fraser?
Yes.
Frank, with your knowledge of that draw behind you, was there any maps that showed the Wakefield water area crossing the street into one of these lots?
Yeah, that's this map. Uh, no, it's this one. No, it's the hydronic map.
Hydronic.
But again, it's not in the wellhead protection area, this is the hydronic soils, town of Wakefield. Here's the well, down here, this is the way that, and that's, that's this little lot, what you're calling the blue lot, right? And you can see it goes across Lyford Road, and it's into that wet area. So, and that's what I was talking about, there's a direct communicate, hydronic communication, meaning water can flow very readily right down to the wellheads.
Just as, in your opinion, or in your expertise as a planning chair.
Pardon?
Would this, would this become a regional approval? Is that enough to make it?
Um, I would, oh, I was gonna say that, actually, earlier, I'll address everybody, is that, planning boards can say that this has a regional impact, that this development has a regional impact. We did it when they tried to put the big gravel pit in behind where it's now Tom and Dulce Lambert's house, because of all the trucks, and it would have an impact on the roads and everybody else around. You, you potentially could say the, the impact on the water precinct makes it a regional impact. I'd, I'd say it's, and Brian might have more input, because you do this more professional than I do, but I think at the very least, you might want to, the board might wanna contact the water precinct and say, hey, are you guys interested in this? And let, let them come back to you. Let them know that there's a development that is not in the wellhead protection area, but it is direct hydronic.
Hydric.
Hydric communication with the wellhead protection area along Lyford Road, and they'll go, Lyford Road again, and.
But that's directly related to this lot.
That's that lot, that's the lot, that's the lot that I'm the most concerned about.
Fraser, D.
This was produced by the state, right?
Lake Region Planning Commission.
It's Lake, or by the state, I'm sure. Yeah, this is Lake Region, and we've got maps, a couple other maps, I have another map, and again, a master plan map, that shows that this whole, this whole parcel is part of the green area now, which means it's considered to be sensitive.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
It need be pointed out, that is a very approximate map.
Yes.
Okay.
It is a very, yeah.
Yes, it's not a site-specific map.
It is not.
One other thing I wanted to discuss was the access on Wentworth Road. It was roughly 120-something feet at one point, and now it's divided again and made worse, it's 260-something feet. But we're only putting in one shared drive, why would, why would we split it?
We split so we, the shared drive would go right down the, that lot line. So the shared drive would, each lot would own a part of that shared drive. See the dash line right to each side of it? That's the driveway easement, it's 20 feet wide here.
Is it crossing a wetland area, or you got this driveway?
No. The wetland is great over there.
So it's 130 feet of frontage.
Yeah, and each of these bigger lots owns at least part of the driveway.
Yes.
It's what I call a reciprocal easement.
Other shared driveways come across one property, and then split at the end. Is that, is that what they're doing up on, Primm's? Or is that?
Uh, I think if you add the back porch to the two lots, then it's. Yeah. So they're gonna both have to have easements, aren't they? Both those lots will have to have an easement for these.
Right, so, my thought is just leaving 150 feet, put a driveway in on one lot, easement it to the other. Well, just, just something we have to look at. We should look at.
What you're offering is not impossible.
And then those are driveways.
I just thought it was cleaner, going down the center of that with a lot line.
Anything else?
John, do you have any thoughts at all?
Yeah, I mean, so, the 250 feet of frontage that they have, obviously the access is from that side. If the intent behind that was to have the driveway access on that side, if it doesn't say that, then it really, they still have the 250 feet of frontage on each lot.
Yeah, they have it on Lyford Road.
Right.
Yeah. Yep. They're just not using the 250-foot area to put the driveway in, they're using a different lot line to do that.
So how would they address this? The two houses off of Wentworth Road, they're, they're addressed with the Wentworth Road?
I have one more question.
Yep.
I think with the Wentworth Road.
Despite a major frontage on Lyford.
I do, yes, thank you. What other thoughts you have? Any other? Something a lot presented to us tonight.
Yeah.
I think we have way too much to consider, to do approval tonight.
What would our action items be?
An original driveway permit for this lot.
Right. Got a definition of wetlands? Wakefield Water District? Driveway access on Wentworth, just to be sure.
Wentworth or Lyford?
Again, a lot of questions on Lot 18. The overlay of the water district, the protected flowers, the, what was mentioned, the, the size of the dry area, the driveway access is off of Lyford Road, would it be large enough to accommodate?
Yep.
2,000 square foot home.
Right.
So how about, how are we gonna acquire this information? What will we process? Will we contact the Wakefield Water District to weigh in on this?
I'll take that.
Okay. Well, before we get there, let's just work, work through this. As far as the wetland information, do we contact Mr. Barney to provide us with more detailed information, or how do we approach that?
We ask for it on, on the plan.
Well, it's definitely not the time yet, we'll be up there walking around in front of scenes.
No, no.
It's not the time yet, if you're not favoring.
Right. What about, so the driveway items, the Wentworth Road would be, we have to review our zoning.
Yes.
Discuss. Lyford Road, we would need a permit from the state for that, so that would be up to the owner.
Someone should contact EPA or whoever it is that's in charge of that flower, correct?
So do we wanna have a continuation for the next meeting to hook up these items? I hate to say it, but I can't promise you DOT will respond within 30 days. So another continuance at that time?
I would say, because we would have to, I mean, we, obviously, we'll be together here, discuss our findings, and if we have outstanding issues, then, or items that need to be addressed, we would have to continue, wouldn't we?
So you're gonna handle the Wakefield Water?
Yes.
Council?
Yep.
I and the owners are gonna handle the yellow flower.
Okay.
That's through, that, we have the Heritage Bureau, and the rest, I think, is you guys.
About Mr. Barney and the wetland, wetland-specific map for this site? I mean, we have an overlay here, does he have one? He must have generated something for you to overlay.
His, his generation was flags on the ground.
Okay.
And heard out and surveyed them.
Gotcha, understood.
Yeah.
Do we have the complete?
Yeah, his notes.
Wetland overlay on, on this plan?
It is on there right now.
It is on that plan.
It is on the plan.
Someone on the public stated there was a river, isn't there?
Right. Apparently that was not a wetland, in his view, or when he was there, so I, I can't answer for him. Okay.
We can, do I, do you guys know?
We'll contact him.
You're gonna contact.
Okay.
Sir, pause that.
I'm sorry.
Who's going?
Who's going?
Am I allowed one, too? All right.
No, I'll figure it out.
Okay. I'll take care of what I want to hear.
Yeah. We have to vote for a continuation here.
Yes, well, we can.
Let's have gotten out of control, then.
Considerate, yep.
Perfect.
All right. And no discussion on continuation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So we will continue this discussion on, continue this public hearing on the similar subdivision for our next scheduled meeting, which is April 11th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know, the flags have gone up.
Would you please put on the agenda when Mr. Barney's gonna attend?
Fraser, very quickly, yeah. Just a point, partners, of people here, now, when a hearing like this is continued, it does not have to be re-noticed for the butters, you will not get new notices, you got your notice, you just heard tonight that it's gonna be at their next meeting, they do have to post, post it like any other public meeting, three days in advance, but because it's continued, you don't have to pay more money, and, and you don't have to go through the whole process they had to go through to be here tonight. So, as long as it keeps getting continued, you don't have to, you won't, the butters, you won't see anything else in the mail, but you've kinda got the notice tonight to come back next night if you want to, okay?
Susan Markey, 75, Lyford Road, all the questions that you have about anything that Mr. Barney did or whatever, you go all the way to the Department of Environmental Services. Mr. Sret, you know that they're gonna come as soon as they try to pull driveway from off Lyford, State Road, I don't know how they got past it the first time, but that's relevant, you know?
They didn't apply the first time.
Yeah, it hasn't been the first time.
Well, whatever, it's not, you know what I mean, we have to do a process.
Yep.
We're gonna roll on it.
Yep, we got it, thank you.
We got it.
All right, we're moving on to new business. Have you amended, what, everybody should believe? It's nice to see all of you, thank you for coming.
Nice job, Dan.
I, I asked the public if you're not gonna continue, take outside, please.
But there's a, there's a, down there somewhere, that's not on the map. You live right there, on the left of the driveway, yeah. Okay, so, where's it at, in your estimation? You mean, where's your?
Well, I talked about this after the. So I sent everybody a copy of our amended zoning ordinance for submission, I printed it out here, I've asked, I went through and amended with our three items that passed on the election, the vote. We've got three C, contiguous, contiguous frontage, I've added I, which is our Cedar Park subdivision, two-acre setback, so that's a new item. And then I replaced our personal wireless service facilities with the new 12K zoning that was approved.
Excellent. Was that uploaded there? Do you intend to upload this whole copy?
It is not uploaded yet, so as part of our process of accepting, of receiving the new zoning, we have to sign this document, and then we have to have it notarized by the town clerk, and then it can be posted, then it will be official. Yes, sir?
If we had trouble with that, with the number two, had to deal with the.
Cedar Park.
Approved driveway? No.
Received.
If we don't sign it, can we still modify that, before we sign it?
We would have to have, as Diane pointed out, we'd have to have another town meeting to vote.
Well, I would suggest that we call Laura and run this by her, because that's a typo, we never talked about.
Removal.
Or approved, and it's, and it's in our definition. So I'm, I'm just calling her, typo, and I'd suggest that we ask Laura, what do we do if there was a typo in one of our warrant articles? We see right away what she says, we have to really fix it. Can't let this run a year.
Okay.
We really can't.
No, I, I wouldn't think something like that would apply.
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna cost Laura a lot.
Yep.
So, you don't know when she comes back from?
I don't, I think she's busy, she's taking off right after town meetings. So, we're saying that we are not going to sign this tonight, so this is not active.
Right.
Yeah, reasons for, we found a typo, justification, isn't it?
I want Laura to fix it.
All right. Well, moving on, then, old business, have initially used as unpermitted, we discussed meeting with Laura, since I will be contacting her about this, I will contact.
meeting with Laura. Since I will be contacting her about this, I will contact her about that. We talked about meeting with her for the selectmen as a co-meeting to discuss that process.
Yes.
And then gravel pits inspections 2021. We had a discussion last month about, about that, about the process. I can't remember where we left off there. Mr. Simone noted that I could not locate reclamation plans. We were wondering whether or not they needed to be current. And we discussed the tiny border authority over gravel pits, and we wanted to get some clarity on that from Laura, so.
Yes.
Can you ask them to do and do it?
We could. We just need to know what the, what the process is.
What they need to entail?
Right.
Context.
There's nothing else on that?
No.
Remember comments? John, any comments?
I got none.
Rick?
I just want to say good job on the first portion of the public hearing. A lot of questions were raised, and there's still a lot of work to do before anything happens with this land.
Yep. Terry?
I have none, other than, no, that was, really was great. I mean, when you have an issue like this, and half of you, or at least half of you butters show up, I mean, that's a good sign.
Yes, absolutely. Agreed. Gary, you have any comments?
Yeah, I just was interested. I thought there was going to be more discussions of yea or nay about it. And there wasn't. So, I mean, the issue was really about the location of, you know, the dwelling and this. I, I was thinking that there was going to be more issue just about the breakdown of it, so.
Yes, yeah. I think there's a, there's a lot of technical questions that we still have pertaining to that, I would say, that will come out, I'm sure, next month. Absolutely. I would like to echo Rick's comments about, about the public hearing. I thought it was great to have very thoughtful comments and discussion. And I'm pleased to have that test. We've had that many people come out. That's great.
Didn't even get a rub.
Was that?
Didn't even get a rub.
Nope, no rub in this. No. All right, with that, the next meeting scheduled for April 11th, 2022, at 7 o'clock. We return. It's 8:12.